Okay, morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock. We're gonna start. Counselor McKenzie needs to get away a bit early. And we don't have Counselor I. He sends his regrets. But we're gonna call the meeting to order and we'll start with a moment of reflection. Okay, thank you. Disclosure of pecuniary interest. You can do it now or at any point in time through the meeting. And before I ask for confirmation of the agenda, I'm just going to make a note. I'd like to recognize the passing of Merk Snyder, past Warden and County Counselor and North Perth Counselor for thirty-eight years, I believe it was. Anyway, I just think we should acknowledge his passing and wish his family all the best in the future here and pass along our condolences to him. Okay. Confirmation of the agenda. We have no changes. Motion to confirm the agenda. Counselor Casenberg, Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? Carrie? Perfect. So we have consent agenda. And it was fairly lengthy. We have a motion. Counsel receives consent agenda items five point one to five point two seven and approves the June third, two thousand twenty-one council minutes. Does anyone want to see anything pulled? Counselor McDermott.
Five, two, six about cemetery funding. I know that's more of a lower tier responsibility, but I don't know if a letter of support would be any good from the county or not, but I know in Perth East, we have a lot of cemeteries and it's something that's going to be very costly going forward.
Okay, do you want to do that right now? Would any, everyone be in favor of sending a letter of support for that? You see a lot of heads going up and down. Anybody against doing that? Yeah, that is gonna be costly going forward. You're not kidding. Okay. So we will send a letter of support for the cemetery funding. And so we will leave consent agenda items five point one to five point two seven and approve the June third, two thousand and twenty-one council minutes. Move by. Counselor Kellum and second by Counselor Willhout. Ron, do you got a question?
Yes. Do we not need to poll the one that Hugh asked and have a resolution saying that we're going to send a letter of support?
Oh, we can.
Or you can, I thought.
We just, I thought we were just gonna give staff direction to send a letter of support.
And incorporate that in with the receipt of consent.
And we'll incorporate that in with the receipt of the consent agenda.
Okay, as long as it's noted that that's what we're doing, so.
That's fine to do it that way, right? Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. Those in favor? And that's Carrie. Perfect. Moving on. We have the new official plan update report for information. And we have Sally. And I'm gonna let you all with Sally. Morning, Sally.
Good morning.
Morning.
You're ready for? Thank you and good morning, Warden H. Stinn and members of council. Um, just a note over to the folks there. I do have some slides if I could share my screen. But I can begin. So.
Be able to share it now, Sally.
Okay, thank you. Are you able to see my first slide?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay. So I've covered quite a bit of detail in the report, but I'm actually gonna stick to just some highlights of the things that are yet to do. So the report talks about the project, sort of the stage that was set, the work that the consultant has done and the work that staff have done over the past sort of year and a half or so. And the slides that we're gonna go through here now talk about the work that we have coming up in order to bring this project to full completion. So in the report and from our, our use of the Colonel P., we know that an official plan is both a text document and a set of maps. And so I wanted to give a sense of both pieces and the, the text itself. We have a full draft of text. So the consultant, WSP, has provided us as they, as they were contracted to do, they have provided us the text and it reflects their policy directions report and all the updates needed to sort of catch up with provincial policy and new, like language updates and things over the past several years. So what we're doing right now is, I think, putting a lens over that text document that is very important for the document's use. So it's a doc, like, I mean, the official plan is our document. It is a document that speaks to how the community will develop over time. And it, it really, I think, should be accessible to as many people as possible. And so from a reader's perspective, that means plain language. And so that's one of the lenses that staff are working on right now to make the document, you know, fairly accessible to all readers. And the other thing that I've talked with WSP about is they are, they're providing a document with all the necessary sort of pieces and framework and it's up to us to make this document about us. So giving it both the personality of Perth County and also making sure that all the policies in there truly reflect the needs of this community. So all the placeholders are there, the base language is there, but we do need to sort of tweak it here and there to make sure it reflects how we how we want our community to grow here and, and some of the nuanced policies that that we have developed over time or that we're currently developing and make sure that things like housing and surplus farm dwelling severances and all those things are really like they have the Perth flavor in there. So that's the work that we're doing on the text right now. So shifting to a mapping conversation, the bulk of the mapping work by volume is complete. Like, we have rebuilt all of the layers, all the data sets that, and recorded each step along the way. So there's a lot of integrity built into that data. And we have also looked at all of the special policies, the various amendments and all the sort of fringe designations that have been developed over time since the last update or last OP and made sure that going forward, it's all very clean and tidy. So the next thing, of course, was the overlays and all of those are also done now, too. So, I mean, looking at the map, it, it looks very full and it's very, I mean, a few of you have seen them in the, the growth planning workshops. It's, it's, it's really, you know, it's really there. There are a couple of components left to put into the mapping and there, the, the, the work that has to be done to make the decisions of how to put them in is, is underway. So the mapping is, like I say, from by volume, it's very close to being done. And yet, there's these two pieces, growth areas and natural environment systems itself to be added. And there's work to do to be able to add them. So that's where we're at with the mapping. So let's talk about growth areas a little bit. Growth planning is part of a new official plan. Certainly, it's part of the work that we do on a regular basis to make sure we're prepared for growth as, as growth happens. And this plan that we have today needs a lot of catching up. So the comprehensive review was done. And we're, we're taking that information and using it to sort of tell us how much growth area to do. And then the work of figuring out where those growth areas are is what staff is working on. And I, I think as folks involved in decision-making, I mean, this council, the council at the lower tiers, there, that is the planning authority. And so when you're faced with decision-making about growth areas, I think it's important to have some fundamental refreshed knowledge about how that takes place or the steps to take in order to do that well. And so we put together some workshops and we have done a workshop now in North Perth and Perth East. We're scheduling for Perseph right now and I've been talking with staff at West Perth about a fundamentals workshop there as well. So the idea of the workshop is to give everyone the same sort of education, the same information about how growth planning fundamentally unfolds. So you, you, you get your comprehensive review completed. And in this case, it was done by professional economists and demographers over at Watson. And then it, it prescribes to you how much area you have deficiencies in. So it says everywhere in Perth is growing, there's enough land in these places, there's not enough land in these places. So we're, then you look at your servicing that you have in each of the lower tiers and how that aligns with growth, potential growth areas. And then the planners, we look at all the potential areas in every direction around a serviced settlement area. And we try to figure out if there's any constraints or compatibility issues. And then as you do that exercise, it starts to identify for you the places where servicing and available land are. And then you can see the growth plan come to fruition from there. So that's the workshop that we've been offering. And it is sort of the place setting for when we will come back and talk to the steering committee about the proposed areas for growth. So we've explained how it works. We're going about doing the work right now. And then we'll come back with, you know, this is our best recommendation about where, where those growth areas are and where they should be placed. And with the planning rationale behind that. So once you get to that stage and there is consensus or agreement about where those growth areas should be, then, then we will firm up our agriculture impact assessment, which is a, a, a report that, that shows the province, which is the approval authority for our new OP. It shows them that we've considered the growth areas that we've selected, that we've considered the impacts of the agricultural land around them. And it's a requirement for our submission when this project is all said and done and we're ready to hand it over to the province for approvals. Now, before we, we're gonna go from this sort of basic talk about growth areas, we're gonna talk about natural heritage neck, but, but I have received a request from one lower tier to look at the comprehensive review and consider whether or not the rapid growth that we've been under since the review is completed in April of last year, what impact might that have? And so that's something that we, we should talk about. And perhaps in the question period today, we can talk a little bit more about that request and, and where to go from there. So we'll slip into natural environment. Another piece of the mapping that needs to be worked on before we can make decisions about what to put in the data set. So you guys will recall back in November twenty nineteen, we talked about the study being what it is. It's a reference document. At the time, there was some contention about how to use the document, especially with respect to the new official plan. And there was contemplation about how to get the most information out to the most people and be very transparent as an organization about the mapping, what it means, how it works. And so we recommended that we take a pause, we work on the official plan and we come up with a strategy to present to you about how to do that effectively. How can we get the most information out to the right people? How can we answer the questions that the, that the public has? And how do we, at the time, we didn't know that we would do that in a pandemic. But anyways, what we've been doing over the past month or so is sort of resurrecting that direction from you to figure out a good strategy about how to do this. And to make sure that we've covered all our bases and we are being reflective of people's concerns and, and also that we're, that we're aiming to the requirement here, which is a systems approach to natural heritage and natural environment areas in our new OP. So we've been considering a targeted direct mail out and putting some numbers to that, developing some draft materials about like a letter and a website that people could arrive at and perhaps a short video. I mean, these are, this is a little bit of brainstorming too, but but we wanna build the content and then put it in various formats and try and get that into the hands of folks that are most affected, but also generally out there. And I think there's a desire for people to have an opportunity, if the map is changing, you know, on their property, that they would have a chance to talk to somebody about what that means. And I think it would be really valuable as a landowner to have an, an example brought out. So if I am a farmer and I want to, you know, I have plans to build something or do something on my farm and, and how does this, how does natural environment mapping affect that project? And so I'd like to put together examples for folks. And the idea being that this information comes together in a package, we present it to you and then you, you direct us on whether or not the strategy we're presenting, you think will do the trick essentially. So that's what we're working on right now is building this strategy to come back to you and present. And I really hope I can do that next month. And that's the goal at the moment. So if that strategy is palatable and we get direction to move it forward, then of course, next step would be delivering it. It would be great to do that throughout the summer because we have a student here with a background in natural heritage that is quite helpful to that project. And also, we wanna keep the momentum on the official plan going generally. So that's also a consideration. Then, of course, we would consider the feedback from the public consultation and then we would propose the mapping for the OP back to steering committee. That's, that's sort of the next stage is the next steps on the natural heritage piece of this larger OP project. So once we're through growth planning, once we're through natural heritage, then what? Like, then how does this project get done? So right now, of course, we're working on the tax, we're working on natural environment and we're going through the growth, the growth planning sort of concurrently. So those three fronts are continuing to move at the same time. And then, once we're at a stage that those three things are in a more complete state, then we pick up the flow chart as proposed by WSP back at, I believe it's four point five. But that's where we get back into committee work, on the steering committee, the technical committee. In fact, I could probably get the technical committee and the steering committee looking at the text as in the natural environment and the growth planning stuff unfolds. So once I've gone through it and given it those lenses we talked about, then I will start up those groups again and get them back in action. And then, of course, bringing it, once it's been through the lens of the steering committee and the technical committee, bringing it back to council, then there is a stakeholder focus group. That group will need some sort of refresher, again, an invitation back into action. And then public consultation. So prior to council adopting the draft official plan, gearing up to submit it to the province and a fulsome public consultation about the draft itself. So the completed text, the completed mapping will, will need to unfold. It's as a statutory part of this project. And much like the natural environment stuff, we have some really exciting ideas coming together about how to do public consultation on this whole plan. Potentially still with limitations of the pandemic, but, but either way, some exciting things around like story mapping and perhaps like FAQ type videos and things that can really like engage people and explain this big document in, in smaller, more digestible pieces. So that's, that's the things that we are reflecting on right now and trying to build content for. And then, of course, public consultation will lead to feedback, which we would then include and bring back to council for adoption. And then it gets submitted to the province. So that's a little recap of how this project is still needing to unfold. It's ambitious certainly to try and finish this this year, but that is a very strong goal of, I believe, council and certainly our department. And that that's the information that I want to highlight from the report. I'm certainly happy to answer questions that you have about it, about the project. And if you wanted to talk more about the, the comprehensive review today too, then we can do that as well, certainly. So I will stop share so I can see everybody. And so that, that concludes what I wanted to share with you. And I'm open certainly here for questions.
Okay, thanks, Sally. Now, questions from counselors? Uh, Counselor Hurley.
Oh, thanks, Sally. No, it's a nice to see there. It's laid out well and I read it well there. And yeah, the natural heritage portion, if you would do as well and bring awareness and engaging the community. Now, we better remember, I know you say it'd be, it'd be, you'll finish this, but of course, again, we're not, this is called the fall is so hectic, right? That does make it tough in the winters where it's nice. So personally, I, I, I locally see this going into the next winter. Hopefully, we could wrap up early. Winners, you'll for farmers to engage. No, it was good. It was good to see. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Casenberg.
Thanks, Sally, for the update. You know how a sense of urgency there is about the official plan coming from North Perth, of course. I want to ask sort of the awkward question. You've indicated sort of optimistic timeline projections. What do you think of the worst-case scenario timeline projections for delivery of the next official plan?
Well, that's a great question. I tend not to think about that stuff. I just keep driving towards my goal, which is this year. But I guess if I was forced to think about it as the, in that way, like, right now, I'm, I'm really wanting to just dig into that text and get through it. I don't think that's a huge job. It just requires a lot of attention and uninterrupted inten- attention. And I, I mean, to do it well, I need to focus. So we have a new team here. They're getting the, under them. And now I feel like that, that window of opportunity is really opening up because everyone here is, you know, humming along, doing their work in their new roles. So that right now, I think, is a, is a important piece. Like, if that happens timely right now, then that flows, that helps flow the other things. Also, I hear what Counselor Hurlick is saying about fall being a busy time. So like, if we can achieve this natural heritage piece, natural environment piece in the summertime, I know it's still wheat harvest and hay crops and things, but if we could achieve it in the summertime, that would, not only do we have some extra resources here in terms of another person, but I think it would, it would help us sort of avoid that busy harvest time in the fall. Cause this is, this is a piece that's really important to the farm community. And so I really think that it's dependent on those two chunks happening in a really timely fashion over the next couple of months. If we can achieve that, then we'll have a good chance of making it this year. And worst-case scenario is that the wintertime is the time when we finish public consultation and we get through it. So I would say worst-case scenario is end of winter, first part of spring.
Counselor Casenberg, you got a follow-up?
Yeah, just one. With regards to the natural heritage outcomes that come from the mapping and so forth, I think we know from experience of other jurisdictions that this can be a highly controversial matter and that probably the time for public consultation cannot be excessively shortened or limited. We have to give ample time for people to have their say and to be able to evaluate the impacts on their plots. So I guess I'm sort of asking about that, right? In terms of that timeline again, I, I don't know what you're factoring in for that consultation period, but I suspect it should be a fairly healthy allocation of time just for the consultation. Comments?
That's a fair point for sure. And I, like, I think we're pulling together information and examples that will really help people understand the potential impact of the map. So a lot of concern comes from not, not not being able to do what, like, to continue your business, carry on farming on a parcel that you've been farming for ages. And and so it's important to understand, and I think the examples will really help, what does the map actually mean to you and your daily practices, but also projects that you might have planned for your farm over the next whatever decade? So let's look at an example of a property where a systems approach would capture more, like, more of the, more of the map would on their property would be green than it was before. A green being the color we use to, to identify the natural environment designation and white being the one we use to designate the agriculture areas. So if that green piece polygon is the word that we use, but if the green polygon on your property changes, what does that mean for you farming that property? What does it mean for you cropping that property, pasturing that property? What does it mean for you to build a barn there or a shed? And I think if, um, I think that if we offer examples of the experience of a farmer who wants to crop that land or wants to build a barn in proximity to that green square or green oval on the map, what is the process? How does the process change from today? And what would their experience be like with a new map versus the map that we have today? And and to, and to do the work that, knowing that behind that green area, we've done our best to figure out that that's the right area and that there is still wiggle room if it's not perfect that shouldn't be burdensome to the landowner. So we all know this is a desktop exercise and that it won't be perfect, but it is good work and it's good science. So let's go back to the study. Let's make sure that we feel like it's good to go, that there, we have other experts telling us it's good to go, decide what to do with it. If that informs our mapping, then let's explain how that impacts an individual person on an individual property. What will it be like for them with a different map? And really what I think people want to understand is that, how does this affect me? How will it change my experience to build a barn? How will it change my experience to grow corn here? And for the most part, it doesn't change anything. And so I want to give people an opportunity And so I want to give people an opportunity to like see that unfold through example, through an example and be able to question it and poke holes in it and, you know, figure out their comfort level there. And you're right, that's going to take some time. I think with the right materials and the opportunity to speak one on one with somebody um and some really, you know, plain language, easy to understand, FAQs, videos, whatever format that we use, that if we're being really transparent about how this thing works and people have a have a genuine opportunity to have their concerns addressed or at least answered, then we'll be as efficient as we can. And it will take some time, like it's going to take, you know, a couple of months at minimum. But if we're doing that concurrently with the other stuff, then I think we can still arrive at a draft in the fall sometime. But we have to be prepared, like you, like you're pointing out. We have to be prepared for the for the instance that it's just, there is just more contention built than not. But certainly, the strategy we hope to bring you in a month's time um is aimed at at helping people arrive at a place of um understanding, knowledge and, you know, having the details in front of them to make their own decision about how comfortable they are with this. Hearing people out is critical to them feeling comfort level. So it is a bit, it is a bit open to to timeline. But I hope with, I guess what I'm saying is with good materials and and a desire to hear them, a genuine desire to hear them, I think it will go as fast as it can go, which I hope is two to three months.
Councillor McKenzie, you had your hand up there once.
Yeah, I um I I appreciate um the comments that Sally has made. And I guess my comment is, I I think the natural heritage designations are probably uh in in our official plan are going to be the most controversial part of the the whole operation. Um and 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 I'm thinking here, and it's not that I'm trying to think uh to divide and conquer, but I think when we when we have all our homework done and we know what we're going to do and we have the examples, I wonder if we went out and I'm not saying that we do it at each of the lower tiers, but maybe uh do a meeting uh in the north part of the county and one in the south. So in other words, take uh uh West Perth and Perth South together um and have a night and 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 go through it. Um and I say in that because usually a night is better than a than a day meeting in the rural communities. And we're, you know, we're looking probably, you know, August, September type of thing uh when we're going to be doing this. So um I I think the the smaller the group you can get, and I'm I'm thinking of the meeting that we had back in Melverton, I believe, one of the one of the meetings back there where we had the whole county there. It's almost too big. Um and it has a habit of of her opportunity to snowball. So I think if we could keep our focus groups a little bit smaller and try and explain things a little better, I think it would be a a an easier project to to get across.
Yeah, that's that's both points are also well taken. I'm I'm anticipating um delivering an effective public consultation where we actually may not be able to gather. Um and if we can gather, that would be ideal. And we would take the materials that we would use online, take them with us. The content is still, you know, quite relevant. And the smaller groups that we can get, um we have to find that balance between how many meetings can, you know, our limited staff pull off. Um and also try to balance that with the experience for the folks that attend is going to be better if they're smaller groups. Like, they will have a better chance of being heard themselves. So the strategy that I'm sort of aiming for um right now is to collect the inform, like, collect the information, make it really accessible for folks, get it out in as many ways as possible, whether that is online, having meetings um or in print. Then um maybe it's even radio or what have you. Then then you will attract the people to the meetings that still maybe have questions or would like to hear it again, um truly engaged. And we can offer them, you know, I'm trying to pull together numbers. So we're 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 using the query function in the um data set to try and get at a mailing list that would be most effective and most easily managed. And so I'd like to walk you through that when I have it all um pulled together and see if you think that also that's a good group for mailing, like a direct mailing that says, hey, this if this there's an actual impact on your property to this degree, um we invite you to talk to us about it individually. And so again, those one on ones perhaps would really help. Um so whether we're able to had gather or not, I think ideally, the community likes to gather. Will people feel comfortable gathering? I I don't know. Um I just want to be able to pull together good information, like I say, that's accessible to people, deliver it in various ways and give give an opportunity to those most affected to actually speak to somebody one on one. So that's what I hope to bring together and present to you.
Councillor.
I guess, yeah, I I I agree. I guess Sally with you. I I I'm I'm going under the assumption that by the time uh September rolls around, everybody's going to have their two shots and it'll be able to uh to open things up. Uh the thing that I think we have to be cognizant of uh is you look at the age group of uh a lot of the farming communities where the natural heritage is trying to impact. And a lot of those people are not computer literate. They do not go online. And and it's a problem. And I know it's a problem for them, but it's also a problem for us to to have them informed. So I think uh I I agree with what you're saying. Uh but I think we have to be, you know, cognizant of of, you know, who we're dealing with and uh, you know, come up with some type of 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 venue that that that's going to work. And, you know, whether we open it up to to to, you know, to small smaller groups of some kind or however, and and you mentioned, you know, about communicating radio, one thing and another. Uh and it may be possible that we can have smaller groups come into uh to the local lower tier municipalities. But again, that's time consuming, you know? So um uh I I I'm hoping, I really am, that uh and and you know, the older uh the older farm generation, uh a lot of them have uh their bull shots now. So I I'm certainly hoping by uh the end of August, September that the, you know, we'll be able to do some type of education and 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 information sessions, uh, you know, to some type of a group of people.
Yeah, I'd like I'd like to bring you materials that could go that that will work in many scenarios. So like, let's reach people through meetings if we're allowed and it works. Let's reach people through radio. Let's reach people through text, um through mail out, and let's reach people online. So, yeah, the materials that we're working on um are going to be adaptable to different scenarios of actually how it's delivered and how it's received. So that we can kind of roll with it as the pandemic, you know, shifts and changes.
Deputy Warden Eggers?
So I guess I'll start with the natural heritage piece. I have a few other comments I want to make uh as well. I I do support that we need to get out and we need to give letters to all the farmers. As a farmer who was affected in the past by having a designation changed on their farm without me really being told, and it does really affect us. You made the comment, it doesn't affect us a lot. It does. Um it's the driest piece in our farm, and yet it is designated as a wetland. So it impedes us from building. It impedes us. If they have their way, they're going to have a say how I plant my crops. There's a whole lot of things that it's going to impede on my farm. And I have big concerns about where this natural heritage is going to go and what's going to happen. And it's a piece that we really have to study. Um my other comments about the official plan. We did, we've had a workshop in Perth East. We centered it around our um towns and villages that that have services. We didn't talk at all about the villages and towns that don't have services. I know there are designations around them, and to me, we need to look at those because that impedes. The only people that are getting um new industrial land, there's two municipalities that, to my understanding, and one municipality is getting it just about all of it. And we're getting very, very small piece of that pie. Some of them aren't getting any of that pie. So is it because we already have land around our villages? If we do, then we need to look at that and we need to bring it into where our our lands are serviced. Because to me, it's not going to do us any good around the small hamlets that don't have water and sewer. And 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 we can't develop there. So I'm very concerned about the amount of land that Perth East is getting and for the next 25 years for industrial. We're getting next to nothing as far as my calculations, two hectares, I think it was. How how is that possible? We don't have an industrial park. We don't, we can't offer an industrial park. We don't have the land. I'm not too happy that WSP used stat dat- data, excuse me, from 2011 and 2016. The data is 10 years old before we start. The last year, we've had tremendous growth in all our municipalities. And I think we need to go back and have a look at that, whether it's staff that does it. I'm very leery of having WSP brought back in again because that is going to be a huge financial thing to look at. But the data they've used doesn't include what's happened in our last year to 18 months. And like I said, we've had tremendous growth in houses. We've got businesses popping up all over Perth East, and we've never had that before. And in order to get bigger, we need the land to be able to do that. So I don't know if you just want to comment. I have a couple motions that I'd like to bring forward that we need to look into this. I don't know if anyone else has any comments before I do that. How do you want to proceed, Jim?
Uh other comments or other councillor McKenzie and then councillor Wilhelm?
I would, uh I guess I would agree uh to a certain extent with what Rhonda has said. Certainly in West Perth, uh we've seen uh uh figures that we have never seen before in in housing. Now, we do have an industrial park and we're working on that. And uh we we have to uh get a good chunk of it serviced before we're able to uh move too far on it, but we're working on that. But housing, um traditionally, uh we had, I believe, uh, you know, anywhere between 12 and 17 houses a year uh in West Perth for for new housing. And uh I believe uh the last year or maybe the last two years, like, we've been running around 37. I think it's the magic number. So um certainly, there's been a massive uh swing to the smaller urban, uh what I call urban, and I I'm thinking of Mitchell and I'm calling it urban, but communities. And uh whether this uh this change will continue, I I'm assuming it will because people are wanting to get out of the larger cities. And COVID has had a lot to do with that. I don't know what the answer is, Sally, but maybe uh, you know, what we need to do is maybe just go back the last four years and look at what's been going on and and base those numbers on on or have a little heavier impact on on where we're going in the future. Um you know, the example um that I use, the one subdivision uh that we have on stream right now, and it's out by where Doug Ite lives, I believe there is 46 houses going out there. And they're working at putting streets in right now, but all 46 houses are already sold, you know? And you get that kind of impact on your municipality. Obviously, there's a different demand in 2021 than what there was in 2018 even. So I I I like I said, I don't have all the answers. Uh that that's why we have you. But I'm not sure if we need a consultant to come in or just have to maybe go back four years and look at what are what what's happening with our housing. Like, I know the previous uh report indicated that we had enough housing for, I forget, uh 30 years or 25 years, whatever it was, and and that's changed, like, we don't. And we have to, we have to do some tweaking uh to to account for that.
Councillor Wilhelm, you had your hand up there once.
Yeah, um thank you. I guess um I'm disappointed that this hasn't been presented to Perth South and West Perth before this came forward to county. Uh we have not seen what is proposed or planned for any growth for Perth South, for example. And from what I understand, it's basically zero, as Rhonda has indicated. And I'm disappointed with that. Uh and as far as hiring a consultant to revise the numbers, uh the dragging out would, to me, we wouldn't even get this done uh this winter if we have to bring a consultant back in, in my opinion. And uh the additional costs are going to be there. So I'm not sure how we can move forward with this um with the, I I'm going to say antiquated numbers that this report is using. And the other thing is that uh I think this natural heritage is going to be a real thorn in this whole moving forward. Um back in Melverton, I think it was Melverton, we heard farmers comment that they had had changes uh on their properties, as Rhonda indicated, no notice. And uh to be honest with you, I don't uh think that's right. I think that if you're going to change someone's property, you should notify them. And I don't believe our planning staff probably has the time or the uh capabilities of going through every piece of property and see if a revised uh heritage is going to change in all the properties in Perth County. Yet, as Sally indicated, somehow we have to notify people if there are changes. And uh so that's quite a dilemma.
Uh any comments to that, Sally?
Yeah, I'm just going to take a minute to make sure I cover. There's, I think, four different things. So let me just.
I think what I heard of that the most was uh some feel the numbers that were put in that used for that report from WSP that between become seriously antiquated in the last two years, year and a half.
Okay, let's start there then. So the the report is the comprehensive review. Um WSP is a planning firm and they work on the text. The comprehensive review is actually done by economists and demographers, so statisticians with specialties in economics and demographics. And that company is called Watson and Associates. So they're the experts on this material. And they um updated it, if you'll recall, it was originally fit, the report was finished in uh earlier in 2019. And then uh middle of 2019, they were asked to update it to reflect sort of high growth rates in the north. And so they did that. They used building permit data. And this council authorized that update. Um so that happened. And what I'm hearing is that there is interest from um at least two of the municipalities to update that study, that report, once more to reflect the experience of these municipalities over the past year and a half. And I would suggest that we go to Watson and ask them to do the work if that's what this council wishes. And we would need to supply, the local staff at the lower tiers would need to supply at least a year and a half's worth of data. But but last time they used three, I don't know what the what would be statistically significant. We we should ask them, you know? Um and perhaps they could come and speak to this council about the work they do, how they do it, how it's impacted by building permit data. Um but essentially, if if there's there's a sense or concern that the numbers are outdated, then it's as simple as this group deciding yes or no, let's update it again before. Because they're the experts and they tell, they tell us it's two hectares, it's 15 hectares, it's 18 hectares, it's whatever. And we figure out where to put it. So I've, I have, in building the two workshops so far, we've looked at properties all around the periphery of serviced settlement areas, because that's where the province tells us we can grow. So if they come back, you know, we've done that work, we're anticipating figuring out, they've told us, you know, us designate X number of acres. So we can now go to the work that we did in evaluating all those different properties and pick out the ones that best align with servicing for the X number. If, if you want to update the study um, and it, and it does come back with new numbers, then we simply take the work that we already did on all those properties around the periphery and we just pick more. So if, I mean, the, the time and the cost of doing the study is up to this group, if you want to put that into the OP project, it's entirely possible. And I can't predict for you what it will tell you. Um, certainly that is the expertise in the area that Watson provides. So I guess that's what I would offer you on that is if, if that's where you want to go, let's do it, but let's not hesitate. And, um, if, and I, and I also can't tell you what it might come up with, but perhaps having them come here and talk to you directly would help also. Um, so that could be arranged. Um, the other thing that came out of some questions and comments was, um, um, I think it was around, I guess, talked about piece of the pie. And I just wanted to clarify that, that the, the methodology used actually looks at growth rate and consumption in each of the four individually. And what it tells us right now is that all four are in fact growing and growing at a fairly significant rate, a rate higher than some of our neighbors, a rate higher than the city of Stratford. Um, and what it also does then is it says, okay, here's your growth rate, here's your projected numbers. I think that's the part that you're asking, can we go and update that part? But what they do following that is they take those projected growth rates, the consumption of land, how fast that will happen. And they say, in your official plan today, you have enough land to, to, to meet your consumption for 25 years or you don't. And what they've said is that in two places, south and west, you have enough land already designated for 25 years based on that growth rate. And in the north and the east, they do not. So it's not, it's not one pie that we're all sharing. It's like there's a, there's a growth rate for each place. And there's an inventory of land in each place. And whether or not it meets the 25-year demand is also unique. It's different in each place. So that's what that report tells us. And so like I said, there's two components. It's the growth rate and it's your inventory of land. And if you want to, I think what I'm hearing is you, uh, there is interest in going back to update to make sure that the growth rate is accurate based on our current experience over the past while. And so I just wanted to give a little more clarification about that. And if, um, so the example in Perth East, I guess, is two hectares, but that reflects a current inventory that gives, I believe it's already 14. And there's so that's, that two hectares is to augment what's already designated to meet the need. This is an exercise in, um, figuring out the rate of consumption and then how much you have an inventory, how fast you're going to use it and making sure that you have 25 years. And 25 years is the magic number, but the province says we have to have. And in many places, we don't have it, uh, like I shouldn't say many places, I guess in two places. But like if we look at individual projects, they, a lot of projects have been unfolding on agriculture land. And it is because like something that's designated agriculture with a special policy. And that's because we didn't have a 25-year supply. So in certain places, so this new plan will actually get us to a place where we have 25 years. But that's only half the story. The other half of the story is we have to track that. We have to look at it every year. We have to know when we're getting short. And like, we have to update every five years to make sure that we keep adding that we always have 25 years. So this is not the end of the story. It's not the only growth that we're going to have for another 15 years. I can appreciate that's the experience in Perth because the plan hasn't been updated for a really long time. However, going forward, we need to look at this on a much more frequent basis and always be adding land to meet our needs. There's a couple other points in there, one about natural heritage and one about the workshops. So the workshops, um, were not in the work plan. They were, if you want to, if, essentially, I felt what councillor Wilhelm expressed is that if I was in your shoes, I would not want to arrive at the official plan without understanding how growth planning works. And so I put that in the work plan so that all the councillors would have an opportunity. It's, it's unfolding, um, in addition to the work that was planned. And I put it in there so that everyone would have that opportunity. So I guess apologies that it's, that it wasn't done sooner or that it wasn't done earlier in the project. But I did feel it was really important piece and had to be done. So that's why we're doing it. Um, and also natural heritage. Um, what I intend to bring to you is my best efforts, our best efforts using the GIS to really be efficient about how to determine who we should notify directly. So we're going to look, we've, we're looking at right now the properties, but we're doing it through the GIS. So it actually, I put in like a parameter and it combs the data for me. I don't have to sit and look at the map on each side road and each concession. It's pulling out for me. Um, right now, the threshold I'm looking at is, um, tell me the list of properties where there is a less than, you know, a less than 1% change on the property. So that's essentially like a sliver. Um, it, it could even be chalked up to digitizing error. So we've got a literature review that we've done to sort of pick that number 1%. So that actually takes a lot of people off the list. Then we're looking at, okay, tell me, um, area, tell me the properties that have less than half an acre change. Um, and then I'll bring that to you and say, do you like this threshold? Like this is the number that it arrives us at. And it's still like, it's still going to be, I don't know the number, but it's still going to be like maybe 2,000, 2,500, maybe 3,000 households that would receive a letter from us saying we would like you to have a look at the map because it's changing on your property and we would like you to have a chance to talk to us about it. And here's what it will do if the map changes. So I mean, in a sense, we're, we're trying to be really strategic about our mailout so that people most affected get the notice. They get maybe the most attention perhaps, but that we still have a general um, consultation for people who are interested and maybe don't have this significant change on their property or even a change on the property, but that people still have an opportunity to understand. So I just wanted to give a little bit more detail about those things because they, they clearly matter to this group, to this council.
Councillor Eggers, you had your hand up there again.
It's a review. It tells us how much land we are going to need for housing. It tells each municipality what they need. But when you look in the employment, I can't find where it tells me how much land Perth East or any of the municipalities should get for employment. So all I see is charts. So is it in those charts that they decided that we're only going to get two hectares or?
Section six. Section six is where they talk about the math that they did in sections two and three to determine your growth rate. And then in section five, they did the land inventory. And then in section six, they summarize. When you combine those two pieces of information, this is the number of hectares that, um, municipality A needs to grow for 25 years. And this is what they have already. So this is the deficit. So it's two hectares deficit in Perth East. And that's in section six.
So part of the problem with the land that's designated already, and I'll use Perth East because that's one I know the best. So we already have land that's designated as employment. We know the farmer is never, ever going to let us develop it. So our hands are tired before we even start here because we have land designated in our municipality that we're never, ever going to be able to use. So, so we have to look elsewhere. Well, then, then our hands are tied because we can't look elsewhere, because we can't have any other land, because we already have all the land that we need. We also have land, and I keep saying this, around the villages and the hamlets that is probably designated that will never get used because it's in the wrong area. So do we already have the land we actually need? Only it's just not distributed properly? Or should we be looking at this different? I'm very frustrated in Perth East. We have some things that can happen here and we can't get, seem to get the land designated that way. And I'm finding this process really frustrating that, uh, you know, we're going to get two hectares for 25 years. And to me, we're not growing at all if we, we can't get the land. So I don't know. I'm, I'm, I can't support what's going on right now. Put it bluntly, I cannot support what's happening, that, that we're not going to be able to do this. And how do we work with these farmers that don't want to let us use our land? If they don't, then we need to go outside the circle. We know there's a 100-acre farm in the middle of Toronto because there was, that person didn't want it developed. We know there are 100-acre parcels in London, same thing. The farmer does not want his property developed. So you're tying our hands, telling us we've got lots of land, but we can't use it. Okay, one of my questions, um, I'll chime in again later if someone else has something else they wish to say first.
Can I just make a comment? Uh, and then I'll let councillor Casenberg. It would sound to what I'm hearing is people would like to see the numbers refreshed or updated as far as growth needs, et cetera, et cetera. Because this is supposed to last us 25 years once we get this in place. And by the growth that I'm hearing about North Perth and West Perth, and even in Perth South, we've surpassed uh, last year, which is kind of a record year for building permits, we surpassed that in four months this year. So just general show of hands, would you, people like to see these numbers updated to more current numbers? Looks like everybody's thinking along those lines. And councillor Casenberg, you had a comment?
Uh, thank you, Warden. Uh, yes, I was actually going to sort of comment along those lines. So you've, you've taken us down the path now. Um, you may recall that in 2019, um, I squawked pretty vigorously about the growth projections for North Perth being way off. And what had happened, of course, was that there was a curve that looked like this. And then all of a sudden, at the point where the data was no longer provided to the consultant, it, the, the slope of the curve changed. So county council did approve back in 2019 a refactoring, a reanalysis or, you know, a reuse effort. And that did yield a change, a material change in lands that were needing to be allocated for uh, various forms of growth. Uh, but I also remind county council that, that that came, I believe, with a $7,500 price tag or thereabouts for that refactoring just for North Perth. So, um, there is a cost to the action that you just mentioned, Mr. Warden. And I think we need to have that evaluated as well. Um, I'm all for having accurate numbers though. My concern is here we are two years later from that refactoring for North Perth. And I would almost argue that we again need to have North Perth refactored.
Well, that's due to the effects of the last year and a half, uh, for the most part. So here's my comment or question. If we're going to do this, we're going to do it right. It's going to cost us a bit of money. I only want to spend it once. You don't want to spend a little bit and then find out we're not there, then have to spend a bit more and then a bit more. So I would suggest that we get that group back to give us the updated numbers. I'm not sure what it's going to cost, but it is going to cost us something. And because there's no sense not doing it and then finding out two years, no, yeah, we got a, we got a problem. Because then you're just spending the money twice. Does anybody comment or question on that? I see a thumbs up from councillor Casenberg, councillor Hurley. So do we need a motion or a resolution to?
Yes, I can give you that.
Okay, Laurie's going to read me off a resolution here.
Thank you. Through the Warden, um, we'd be happy if council would direct staff uh, to review and update a comprehensive review for Perth County. The, um, that's prepared by Watson and to consider the impact of rapid growth throughout the recent years on the lands needs analysis that is in the report. And we can have them come and present that to you as part of this. So you're able to, you're able to talk to them about their methodology and how they came up with these numbers.
Okay, everybody heard what Laurie just said. Do I have a mover in a second? Remove by councillor Casenberg? Seconder? Councillor Wilhelm? Last chance for comment or questions. Those in favor? That's carried unanimously. Okay, so there's some direction there, Sally. So at this point in time, councillor Eggers?
I'd also like to make a motion that the planning staff be directed to look at the designations around the hamlets and the villages to see if they should be redistributed differently in their respective townships and consultations be held with those municipalities or townships as well.
So you're making that a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a seconder? Councillor McDermott? Any comments or questions about that resolution? Councillor Casenberg?
In principle, it, it sounds right, but I'm a little concerned about a lack of understanding of what the impacts on the organization might be at this point in time. I know that, um, that planning, a lot of work on its plate. In fact, I suspect it's overworked. And, um, and so my, I would rather, and, and I'm not yet suggesting an amendment, but rather suggest that we ask staff for a report indicating what would be involved in, um, and what kind of process could be unfolded and what the costs might be. Because I think there's cost implication here.
Councillor Eggers?
I'm asking for the planning staff to do this, not WSP. I asked for this a long time ago when this process all started. I said then that the, we need to look around. We have all this land designated as industrial or residential or whatever around some hamlets that we know that's never, ever going to happen. So to me, this is part of the process for the official plan. Because if if Perth East already has a whole lot of industrial land around a village and that's not where it should be, it should be around, say, Millerton or Shakespeare, then let's move it. That's what I'm asking for, to be moved. So it's in the proper area, not have a designation in a whole municipality and you can't use it.
Councillor Casenberg?
I, like I said, I agree in principle. I'm just concerned about whether we have staff resources to do this and whether we won't see that report four months from now as opposed to in the more immediate future. Um, I can certainly attest at this point, based on North Perth experience, that, um, Mr. Yilmaz, who's working on North Perth files is, uh, about up to here in terms of his workload. And I'm not sure that any other member of the planning staff is going to have a lot of capacity in the next few months. So, um, we might do this, um, Rhonda, but my concern is we won't see it uh, for a while. And I think it's a little more urgent than that if we want to keep this OP, um, moving along. And, and I, I think it's necessary. Don't get me wrong. It's just we have to look at the resource base.
Councillor Eggers?
Well, we already have it done in Perth East, actually by our former planner. He did it last, uh, April or May. So, so ours is done unless planning staff today have some, uh, changes or comments they want to make to it. But it, it's at least a basis and a start, but it still has to be part of the official plan. But it still has to be part of the official plan process. Before the official plan is done, this has to be done.
Sally, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just I have I have looked at that work and that Adam did. And those designations are not it's not an industrial designation. It's a village designation or a hamlet designation. So what the the ask is, or the question is, can we de-designate village and translate that into an industrial designation somewhere else? And I did ask that question of WSP, just as another planner, what they thought about that. And and they they advised that it wouldn't it would be a hard argument to make at the province level when we submit our OP. But I'm happy to look into that further and get you more like concrete rationale or reasoning. And maybe we could, like that that work that was done in Perth East, we one one approach would be to use that as a sort of a pilot, explore what that work might or might not achieve in terms of adding it to a serviced area in a different designation. If that's possible, if it's palatable, is there a planning rationale? Like, we can do that and at least learn if it's a road that is fruitful before we replicate it in the other three.
Okay, Councillor Aggins, one last time, and then we're moving on to a vote.
I'm not asking for residential to be changed to industrial. I'm asking that these designations, and you're probably right. I don't know, sure if we have industrial designations around our small villages, but maybe we have a designation, say, in Milburton that is is zoned industrial, and it it has changed, and maybe it should be residential. So you take the residential from around that village. You bring that into the village of Milburton, change that in that industrial to residential, and then use that industrial and put it somewhere else to make a larger package. I'm not asking you to to switch what you just said. That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking that we look to see if we should be consolidating or if we already have the lands. They're just not in the right areas is what I'm asking.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. And you want to repeat that? We've gone along so long. It was more to do that Councillor Aggins wanted the designations looked at around each municipality, see what we had or didn't have, and what might be done to change them.
And consultations with those.
And consultations with.
To look at the designations around the hamlets and the villages, consultations to be held with the municipalities. Tyler, was there anything else?
Oh, that's what I have. Okay, so we had a mover and a seconder. We've had a big discussion here. Those in favor of that motion? That is carried. Okay, so we'll leave that with you too, Sally. Nothing like giving you more work. Okay, anything else? Just seeing any hands fly up, but I do have a motion here. The Perth County Council receives the County of Perth New Official Plan Council Update Report for Information. Moved by Councillor Hurlick, seconded by Councillor McDermott. Those in favor? Carrie, thank you very much, Sally. And now we're going to move on to the PC Connect update. So we'll have to get Maggie on. Okay, morning, Maggie. I just got acknowledged that Councillor Aggins is now with us via phone. So if we have some votes, I guess we should get his answer verbally over the phone. Unless it's all but unanimous, then it wasn't really going to matter. But okay, anyway, morning, Maggie, and let you take it away.
Amazing. Good morning, Warden and members of council. So as always, I'd just like to provide a very brief summary of our monthly PC Connect Update Report that is before you this morning. So we are very excited that the stay-at-home order has been lifted and that we're safely transitioning into the first step of the reopening Ontario roadmap. So now that the stay-at-home order has been lifted, we have received approval from the MTO to remove our essential travel-only messaging and proceed with marketing our service as we see fit. So during step one of the reopening roadmap, we have eliminated our essential travel requirement or messaging, and we are starting to organically encourage responsible travel to all needs, which now includes retail and recreation throughout the county and surrounding areas. So of course, contingent on the evolving guidelines and the and the COVID landscape, we do plan to ease back into our paid marketing efforts in step two in order to acquire new customers. And this will include multimedia campaigns with social media, targeting ads, our radio ads, newspaper ads, and potentially another direct mail out in order to reach our target market and demographics that are isolated from technology. So throughout the duration of the provincial stay-at-home order, our ridership decreased by an average of thirty two percent. So in May, PC Connect completed sixty two rides on Route A, twenty rides on Route B for a total of eighty two rides and a total to date of six hundred and fifty seven. So just to provide a quick comparison to another community transit project, Ride Norfolk launched a run that is funded by the CT Project in May of twenty nineteen. And this route travels from Bramford to Simcoe and back again several times a day. So compared to twenty twenty, Ride Norfolk's ridership on this run decreased by twenty seven percent, servicing a year-to-date total of four hundred and fifty seven rides. So as an already established brand and service that launched well before the pandemic in twenty nineteen, Route A has actually already serviced more rides in twenty twenty one, which gives us great hope for our ridership and our overall service as we continue to reopen Ontario. So as reported in our last update, the city of Stratford released a joint RFP for a digital transit booking app and web platform on behalf of the ICT. So the RFP closed on June second, and we're currently in the process of evaluating the submissions and conducting the necessary interviews. So the objective of this technology is to enhance the overall PC Connect rider experience by offering a number of options for riders to book and pay for their PC Connect trip. So once the tech is implemented, our riders, sorry, will be able to pre-book the ride through either the app, a web portal, or the toll-free phone number that currently exists. They'll be able to pay for their ride via cash, debit, or cash. And they'll also be able to track the bus in real time so they know exactly when the bus is going to be showing up at the bus stop and when they'll be able to reach their destination. So in addition to these great features, we'll also be able to derive a great amount of ridership data, which will be vital in our efforts to advocate for a long-term, sustainable project and will also allow us to make more informed quantitative research research approach to our decision-making about the PC Connect service. So overall, we're extremely excited to implement this new technology in the near future. And we're hopeful that it will overall improve the PC Connect customer journey by creating a seamless experience for riders to book and retrieve PC Connect information. So that does conclude a very brief update for everyone this morning. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Anyone who have any questions for Maggie? Councillor Aggins, let me, he just flashed up. Question from Councillor Aggins? He's flashing and beeping at me, but I'm not hearing anything. Questions from anyone else? Don't see any. Thank you, Maggie. I have a motion here that Perth County Council receives a PC Connect May Update Report for Information. Moved by Councillor Callum, seconded by Councillor Aggins. Those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, so we're going to. Well, Councillor Aggins, are you in favor of that motion? We're not getting any response. Oh, yeah, thanks, Maggie. We're going to move on. That was your dad on the sending myself. Okay, next we have the Perth County Diversity Report from Justin Diaz.
Lots of handcuffs today.
Oh, there's Justin. There's Sarah. And I believe, did I see a consultant flash up there once? Oh, there we go. Perfect. Okay, we're ready for you people. So Joanna, take it away.
Great. Good morning, Warden, each and every members of County Council. I'm pleased to be joined by my colleague, Sarah Franklin, who contributed to the report as well as the entire public engagement and charter development process, as well as Darcy Lacey, who was our consultant from Pillar Nonprofit Impact Consulting. So Darcy has been a valuable resource in support and design and execution of the public engagement activities in the charter development process. And I will actually call upon Darcy a little bit later on in the presentation to highlight kind of what we heard part of the report. So I do have a presentation to share. I'm hoping I can do that now. Yeah, we got her up there. Thank you. Great, so. So just a quick reminder of the the background in terms of the steps that brought us to this draft diversity equity and anti-racism charter that is included in the agenda. So on December third, a notice motion was adopted for staff to bring back a report on a proposed process for a Perth County Diversity Equity Anti-Racism Charter. Since there were many different interpretations of a charter, staff undertook a research-based approach to understand the current practices, understand how a charter would fit within the larger community context, and engage the stakeholders to understand community expectations for the charter. And then staff returned on to County Council on January twenty eighth with the proposed charter process that was approved by council for adoption. So the process that council adopted was for the development of a Perth County Diversity Equity and Anti-Racism Charter to be developed that would accomplish a number of things, including serve as a tool to communicate the county's commitment to diversity, inclusion, and racism, serve as a guidance document to be referenced when initiating specific diversity and inclusion initiatives throughout the county's divisions, identify the values and principles related to diversity, equity, and racism that each division should incorporate when delivering their business plans, show how diversity, equity, and anti-racism are considered within regular reporting to council, and finally, to support council's decision-making through the application of an inclusionary and anti-racism lens. So following council adoption of this process, a dedicated webpage was set up on the Perth County website for the community to understand this charter development process, to subscribe for updates on the process, find out opportunities to participate, as well as to provide input. So once council had approved this process, staff sided with the expertise of consulting firm to help facilitate the public engagement process and provide expert advice and support. So Pillar Nonprofit and Impact Consulting was engaged as a leading voice in the diversity equity inclusion space and who's done much work in the region. And we're very lucky to have Darcy and her team support our work and be with us today on call. So in terms of the public engagement process, there were four main components that Pillar's team helped to design and support. A community survey was conducted that garnered a total of a hundred and two responses. The purpose of the survey was to understand the community experience with racism, discrimination, as well as to start uncovering those values, principles, and roles and responsibilities that would be incorporated from the charter. For community, sorry, excuse me, for virtual community roundtables were conducted between March twenty second and April second. These offered an opportunity to dive deeper on the survey questions as well as provide a forum for more personal discussions. A virtual roundtable was conducted with the senior management team in March. This also allowed each division to start to think about how the issues of racism and discrimination impact their area of the organization. And finally, individual interviews were conducted. Seven individuals who were unable to attend the virtual roundtable. So these interviews provided an opportunity for those, again, who were unable to attend one of the roundtables, to participate in a session, have a personal phone call with our consultants. So the goal through all of these four components of our phase one public engagement process was to provide a variety of means for to ensure that everyone that wanted to participate could and better understand both what needed to be included in the charter and also what else we needed to know about as we undercut this process. So I will, at this point, I'd like to pass over to our consultant, Darcy Lacey, from Pillar Nonprofit Impact Consulting, to talk a bit more about what we heard, that what we heard was said through the surveys, the roundtables, and interviews that she helped facilitate and support. So I'll pass things over to Darcy.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you through the Warden to council, I think, is how you frame it. So thank you for this opportunity. I also want to say on behalf of Pillar, we really enjoyed this this gig, as it were, to work with you and your staff to do this. I just have two or three slides at a high level, just to sort of go over what what we heard overall. So to begin with, particularly around the roundtables and the one-on-one meetings, there was generally a great appreciation that such a consultative process had been developed and given giving people the opportunity to come in and participate. And threaded through all of those conversations was a real interest and commitment to building a community that is inclusive and welcoming for all, along with the recognition that the community is changing and that there is a real interest in welcoming new people into the community. And at the same time, that, you know, in our conversations, obviously, it was geared to less some responses, but there was a clear recognition that that change is needed. So if we could go to the next slide. So a lot of conversation around the fact that there needs to be some intentional efforts to welcome and integrate new communities and different communities and and individuals with different identities. So there was definitely, you know, immigrant communities were mentioned as as a as a community that, you know, there's a real appetite to invite families, immigrant families, to move and live and work in in Perth County, as well as, sort of broadly speaking, the gender, black, indigenous, people of color community. But there are people also spoke to sort of the less visible identities, particularly the LGBTQ plus community that and folks that who may be of lower socioeconomic standing, that there really needs to be some intentional effort to to recognize that this community is their community as well. And newer and younger generations were also mentioned, which was, you know, very reflective of the fact, the recognition that you want to keep your community growing and thriving and that you want younger folks to to choose to move and live and raise families there or not leave at all and and remain. So those were sort of, it was very, very detailed conversation where people were identifying who they thought that needed to be that intention needed to be paid in terms of making making the community welcoming. And then the last slide for me is the charter itself. So people really sort of saw the charter as as an aspirational document, a starting point to get things rolling within within the county in terms of sort of being able to guide the work moving forward. But also even, you know, by example, you're setting a benchmark that may be individuals as well as the public and private sector organizations within within the community may also use that as a as a framework to advance the work within their institutions as well. But it came up, you know, frequently and over and over again, that the charter is needs to be viewed as a starting point, following up by with sort of so clearly identified action. following up by, with sort of clearly identified actions that could be measured over time, holding both the municipality and the community accountable. So at a high level, this was, you know, what I heard in terms of the roundtables we facilitated and the one-on-ones, and then even what I extrapolated in terms of reviewing of the survey results. So, thank you, Justin. I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Darcy, for that. And Darcy will be around as well afterwards, if there's any questions related to what she had done. So the charter document that is included in your agenda package, we believe this to be a collaborative, community-driven effort through the Phase One input that was, you know, directly contributed to the contents, as well as the Phase Two review process where the document was revised and refined to address any gaps. So the document contains nine guiding principles and values. These are the building blocks of charter and our work going forward. So these guiding principles and values should serve as those universal beliefs that we hold to be true and that we are committing ourselves to. The draft also contains specific commitments and expectations of the county based on the various roles of the organization plays, so both those internal, external roles. So the draft contains commitments and expectations in terms of, as a policymaker, and the policies, bylaws, and governance that the county exercises as an employer, so someone who hires, trains, and oversees staff, as a service provider that serves both residents and businesses, as a purchaser of goods and services that procures goods and services and engages contractors on its behalf, and as a community partner that is involved in committees, working groups, associations, and members of collectives working for the benefit of the community. So in all its various roles, the county has some responsibilities and roles that are outlined in the charter. And finally, there's a section on responsibilities. This was highlighted as a critical piece in terms of the implementation. So roles and responsibilities represent much of the initial action that must be undertaken to ensure that the charter values and principles are put into practice. So this includes responsibilities for upholding the Charter of Staff, Council, committees of Council, including those that are internal and made up of Council and Staff, or those that are external, that include some external representatives. So really, responsibility across the organization is outlined within this charter documents. In terms of next steps, there are a number of recommendations for council consideration. The first is adoption by council, which would allow staff to integrate this into the current and future work plans. There are also recommendations for dedicating some more resources to become a member of the Canadian Centre for Diversity and Inclusion and pursue membership in the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities. The CCDI membership offers a host of education and action-oriented resources and toolkits that we think would be very beneficial to help us kind of do some of that more implementation, action-oriented piece of the charter and the Coalition of Inclusive Municipality Membership Process. This involves a commitment to dedicate resources to inclusion, as well as making declaration and creating a plan of action. So again, that's really much an aspirational goal that we think the charter might be a good first step in leaving us down that path. It is also recommended that the CEO, the Office of the CEO, take on the corporate responsibility for administering and implementing the charter. As a whole of organization initiative, the Office of the CEO is best positioned to lead this to an ensuring accountability across all the county's many divisions. And then finally, through the charter development process, we were approached and linked with a number of organizations, collaborators, and working groups across the region and even across the province, who are all trying to figure out how to best advance diversity, equity, and anti-racism from a community perspective. And the charter has brought Perth County to the table in many respects and allows us to be an active partner going forward once it's adopted. So with that, I will welcome any questions for myself and the project team from council.
Thank you, Justin. If we could stop screen sharing, then I'd be able to see some faces. Oh, we're back. Very good. Okay. Questions from council for either Justin or Darcy, or we have Sarah on the screen as well. Counselor Hurley?
I know. Good. Thanks, Eric, guys. Early in the presentation, there talks about anyone who is visually different. Just questioning, I mean, we're all different in a sense. Different from who? Different from what the norm is traditionally? Is that what you're saying? Is that what we're getting at?
Sure, I might refer that question to Darcy. She's very well versed in kind of the.
Yeah, I literally, I lifted that from some of the comments in terms of the notes that were said. And so the context of it is around the visible minority and all, you know, persons who might have disabilities of some kind. So there was a, yeah, so that was the context in which that would.
Counselor Hurley?
Yeah, no, I just, it was interesting there because, of course, I mean, we're all aware and we all, for years, follow discrimination laws and everything. I mean, we help pound both people that are discriminated against and first, you know, accessibility and stuff, that's something we always are striving for with alligators and such. No, it was just, it was weird, you know, thank you.
Hey, other comments or questions for either the panel? Counselor McDermott?
Yeah, on page 100 of the draft, it talks as an employer, we will remove credentials or qualifications. I have a hard time supporting anything that would have us remove credentials or qualifications for a job. I don't think that should be there. That's a very slippery slope.
Justin, you got an answer for that?
Yeah, so through the warden, I think that, you know, obviously, all of our jobs are vetted through the RHR department, and they establish the necessary credentials. And I don't think we're suggesting removing any necessary credentials. We did hear through the consultation process that sometimes there may be unnecessary credentials that may pose some barriers to applicants. So we wouldn't, again, not suggesting we remove any necessary credentials, but just having through our HR division, kind of looking at our job postings and making sure that they're not providing unnecessary barriers through the credentials.
Other comments or questions? Counselor McDermott?
Yeah, on page 101, about the purchasing of goods and services. It sounds like we're going to be policing our suppliers on what their policies and procedures are. And I don't think that's the business of the county to be creating more red tape or interfering with somebody, how they run their business. They will be accountable to the law like everybody else is. So I can't see having that in the charter either.
I'll let Justin or whoever take a crack at that one.
Sure, through the warden. So I think the intent of that specific clause is in regards to, you know, when we have, for example, contractors working at the county building or on county projects, that we would be, you know, calling out anti-racism, calling it racism or discrimination if we were to observe it, but not by any means interfering with internal company policies or practices.
Other comments or questions? Counselor Eggers?
Just going back to what he was asked. We know what the definitions mean, and Justin just gave some good explanations. But I'm wondering if we should just make it a little clearer in the charter so that other people don't interpret it a different way. And I have another one to bring up, and it's under committees. And I did, under responsibilities of implementing the charter, and this is in page 102. And I did send an email to Justin, and I understand what he's saying, but it's under committees of council. It says, actively recruit diverse representation on committees. I think that needs to be specified, that those are committees outside of council, because we have councils, or we have committees of councils, such as land division personnel. They're just council members. And so I want to distinguish that we know what it means, but I want others to know that others cannot come in and be on those committees. These committees are people that are committees that are outside of council committees. And I think we need, just to clarify the wording of that, and also what Hugh has brought up too. We may, we may know what it means, but other people are going to interpret it a little differently.
Justin?
Sure. And so to the first point, I think this document serves as a companion to the existing, you know, policies and procedures that are in place, whether it be regards to procurement or hiring. So it really is a companion. It doesn't override, you know, any of those documents in that way. And I, you know, I think this is the first step, again, in terms of adopting the charter. There will be some communications that will have to go along with this in terms of sharing that within the community and letting, letting, you know, the community know that this is the expectations that we have as a county. So both within that exercise, as well as within when we post this to the website more publicly, we can do some of that clarification in terms of, you know, what those points mean. And we can certainly do that within the document, if that's the will of council as well.
Okay, other comments or questions? Counselor Casenberg?
If I can find my unmute here, thank you. You know, I have to admit to being quite grateful for this work. I concur that it is an early part of what is no doubt an ongoing journey. And I'm glad that it's been brought forward for our endorsement. I'll be at some word tweaking, maybe relevant on the one matter, by the way. It might be committees appointed by council, which would cover both council-based committees and advisory groups and so forth that we appoint. I certainly appreciate the work that county staff has done. The work of Pillar Nonprofit is our guide by the side on this one. And I think that we have some appealing project outcomes here. I do want to sort of point out that this work comes in the aftermath of some interesting complexity, which I don't need to rehash. But I will say that in the aftermath of some of what happened earlier in the life of all of this in our council, I heard from a number of people who indicated to me that they were quite unhappy with my intrusion into such matters. They found that and felt that there was no racism in Perth County, that they had never heard of racism or heard racist comments spoken here and more of that nature. And I think the background report that was collected through our project identifies that that belief is not correct, that there is racism. It is being perceived by others, as well as other forms of discrimination. So I think we have proof now that there's work to be done. I want to say that I also took note during the focus group that I participated in of a call for an ongoing committee or advisory group or working group, a body which allows those with lived experience to contribute to bringing this charter to life, to supporting our county with the work that lies ahead and that adds to the diversity of voices. And I did not spot significant reference to that call in the report from the consultant. So I draw that to your attention, Darcy. I think that request is logical, even if it might create work for us. And I do think that it's kind of akin to our Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. And we shouldn't need to have it mandated by the province to actually do it in this case. Neighboring communities have created committees. They've appointed groups of interested citizens, most of whom do have lived experience to support the work of creating inclusive communities, the work of anti-racism, the work of equity. And I have a sense that this remains an important step, that it's going to be needed to support the Office of the CEO, which has been proposed as the focal point for the county actions in moving forward. Some may argue that this committee, to be established to support or a committee that might be designated as this, is the Community Safety and Well-being Plans Steering Committee moving forward. But frankly, I disagree that that's the place to assign this work. I think it sends the wrong message when we assign concerns about diversity, equity, inclusivity, and anti-racism to structures that have a significant focus on policing. And so I want us all to consider that potential that we need to create an advisory committee or working group, whatever you want to call it, moving forward. Our neighbors have done so. I also know that an open invitation for review of the charter was placed in the public domain. And I'm hoping, and perhaps Justin or others can comment on this, that the draft of this charter was circulated to organizations like the Multicultural Association to ensure that they did have opportunity to offer comment. I think when we think about next steps, there's one piece that was sort of alluded to in the presentation, but I want to sort of hammer this home. I think that this charter represents an opportunity for broad dissemination, not just corporate interests, the corporation being the County of Perth, and that there's an opportunity for adoption or endorsement, however we want to see it, by others. That's been suggested. I think we need to think about how we move that forward so that others in our county can sign on, if you will, and indicate that they too aspire to live and act in ways that are espoused by this charter, this good charter. And so I think we need to formulate that opportunity. Grateful for the suggestions that we join these organizations. Think that we should be at the table. We are at the table. And it will be a good idea for us to be at the table for the foreseeable future. And so again, I sort of wrap up by saying, I think this is a great start. And even if we continue to neglect the idea that we need a committee or advisory group or whatever, we do need something of a plan. And I'm hoping that staff through the CEO's office, as suggested, will tend to initiating a plan and to the work of infusing all of our work with the charter principles. That means we're going to need some budget and resources, I suspect. And I look forward to seeing that emerge in the budget process as we move into 2022. I really do look forward to next steps. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Counselor Hurley?
Now, there is a fee here that we're joining with the other Canadian room of this. So we'll expand there. Counselor Casenberg is on top of that, more budget and more room, from what I understand. I understood they were coming in with regular info. First thing, you're asking again, is where we're talking here?
I think, if I may, Mr. Warden, through you respond to that. I can't prejudge what that budget's going to look like. I can tell you that, for example, that we do have a reasonable budget, and perhaps the clerk can speak to this, for the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. And that committee has various responsibilities with regards to promoting accessibility and providing education and reviewing plans. And so, again, not knowing exactly where we're going with regards to how the work gets allocated, I suspect there will be a need internally for some allocation of funding in the future. I think we wait for that to budget 2022.
Okay, so basically, I thought that was a great presentation, a great job of putting that together. The one thing we have to all remember, this is only a starting point. So I do have a motion here, and I've heard a couple of comments about maybe re-tweaking some language or whatever. But I do have a motion here. We're going to see where it goes. Perth County Council receives the Perth County Diversity Equity and Anti-Racism Charter Report for information. Perth County Council adapt or adopt the Diversity Equity and Anti-Racism Charter, and that all divisions be directed to incorporate the charter into their annual work plans, and that Perth County initiate the process to join the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities, and that Perth County become an employer, member of the Canadian Centre for Diversity and Inclusion to enhance education and training opportunities for council and staff. Now, do I have somebody willing to move that, what I just read? Counselor Casenberg, seconded by Counselor Willhout. Now, having said that, if we need to do some tweaking on some words and wordsmithing, that can be done. This is just a starting point. Perhaps staff can look at a couple of comments as far as the wording.
And we will, we will clarify that.
And they're going to clarify it and get back to us. Anyway, so I have a motion. It's been first and second. Last chance for more comment. Counselor McDermott?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment. To join the Coalition and the Canadian Centre, I think at the moment, our staff is extremely busy. And I would suggest that that be put off and look at that in the future. I think right now, the economic situation, as it is, that they need to be more focused on getting our economy moving and getting businesses help.
Okay, actually, this motion says to initiate the process. This doesn't mean we're doing it tomorrow. It'll be. an ongoing thing.
Is that for 2022 budget? Is that what they want?
I don't have anything here for about the budget.
It's about $3,000. So we can include that in the 2022 budget.
Do we need that added to this motion?
Um, I would say, yeah, for clarity, I would say that we would join them 2022, if that's the wish of council.
Okay, can we deal with that separate than this motion?
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. It's the first and second. Those in favor. That is all but unanimous and Counselor Wright, I'm not sure if he's going to respond. You in favor of that motion? Not getting any response back. That's carried. So we have a second issue to deal with and that was to towards the 2022 budget. Yeah.
So through the board, I'm just requesting for council as we initiate the process to join the there's a $3,000 charge for the Canadian Centre for Diversity and Inclusion. It's $3,000. So does council want that to be in the 2022 budget? And we would be joining in 2022?
Counselor Casenberg.
Um, actually, I think we might be better served if we issue a resolution that essentially says that staff should consider and bring forward budget requests to support the efforts in 2022 for the 2022 budget year. Does that, that seem, it seems more expansive, right? It gives a little bit more room to move.
I haven't got a problem with that. Okay, you're going to make that a motion then?
Back to back. Sure thing, Warden.
Okay, do I have a second here to that? Now, slur Matt Duncan. Any comments or discussion on that? So that would be just to investigate and look into and bring back.
So through the word, yes, it would be to, direction to staff to bring forward a budget request to support the Charter efforts for 2022 year.
Okay, Counselor Agus.
So if, if something comes back, can you tell us all what this group committee does or what our involvement entails? So that we have a better grasp of what it all is about.
Through the word, and absolutely, we'll bring a budget, a report on the budget and we will make our best efforts to outline what the budget reflects in terms of activity. So that it's clear.
Counselor Earl.
And no, I, I gotta agree with, and another thing too, do we ever see what kind of status these groups are, um, they're collecting premiums and stuff with axes and such? Do we follow up on that? Is that something we do? Rather what a group association is, is it, do we make sure that they're recognized or they're what they're up to?
Through the word, and yes, we will follow up on that. We'll make sure that's part of the report. The Canadian Centre for Diversity and Inclusion is a reputable organization. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, I am. And we, we need, going forward, we always need to make sure our local groups do. You know, they give themselves handles and we look around communities in the country for, we need to make sure people are following it and what for me is up to if there is something we can do there for management, business, you know, business numbers. That's what we do. Of course, the unit way nationally, we want to make sure all the groups and stuff to engage in that's something we do. How does it work?
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. It's moved by Counselor Casenberg, seconded by Counselor Duncan. Those in favor of that motion? That is all but unanimous. And I'd ask Counselor Wright, his comment on that, but we're not getting any feedback from there, so. That's carried. Any well carried. Okay, thank you very much. Want to thank Justin and Sarah and Darcy for all their work on this and we've come to a very good starting point. And let's hope we can keep it moving. Last comments from Justin and staff or whatever.
I know. Thank you. Yeah, we look forward to bring back that report, follow up on those items.
Okay, thank you. Very good. And we are going to move on. Corporate services. And that would be the COVID cost for 2020. Let's see, and Cory there just yet. Oh, there he is. Morning Cory.
Morning, Warden.
We're ready to go.
Thank you. Warren, council. Report in front of you is basically a closeout of what the impacts of COVID were for 2020. I'd just like to thank the provincial federal government. I'm providing some of this funding. As you notice in the report, we were impacted by $1.53 million in 2020 related to COVID. In that we received just over a million dollars in 2020 related to COVID and we've retained about $540,000 to be put into 2021. As well with the 2021 budget was in showing that we approximately have about $400,000 in costs related to 2021. So overall, it looks like we have sufficient amount of funds to cover 2021 as well as going to 2022. If there are any specific questions to report, I'd be happy to.
Hey, thanks Cory. Questions for Cory? Not seen any hands. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the Perth County COVID Cost 2020 Report for information. Moved by Counselor Willhite, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to the transfers.
Thanks, Warden and council. The second report here, along with the COVID report, looks at the overall surplus deficit to the budget for 2020. Within the reports, we're showing about just over a million dollars in overall surplus. The surplus is specifically related to the Public Works Division as well as the reconciliation of social services. I can specifically identify within the comments, the breakdown of those overall surpluses. Within 2020, we were providing council with a update that we were going to be with under budget within winter maintenance. We were actually under budget by 18% in winter maintenance. But we did have additional costs related to drainage, significant drainage costs that had impacted the county in 2020 versus what was budgeted. The only part that I wanted to bring up is that with lighter winters, we do generate revenue in our fleet to generate future asset purchases through the basically charging equipment to the other divisions. The other divisions then were overall not be able to put money into those reserves because of the light winters. So there was one impacting factor that we would like to transfer some of that winter maintenance surplus into the fleet reserve itself. The reserve over the past few years is basically, we didn't transfer about $337,000 towards that reserve because of being under budget within the winter maintenance overall. So if there's any specific items in the report that I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, questions for Cory? Comments, Counselor Agus?
Well, I do see that we've made quite a bit of $1.6 million. I make this comment every year at budget. I have trouble that we're going to put so much money into levy stabilization because we can never seem to get that money out when it comes to the budget and how we can use it. So here we are again. We have all this money that we've taken from the ratepayers. And when we get to the budget, I want to see that we're going to use this money that they're not going to be paying extra next year and we're not squirreling it away. And I do understand that, you know, if we take it one year, then we seem to have to come up with it the next year. But we have projections and I have found that the last few years, those projections are way out when we get to the actual year. We already have projections for 22 and 23. And I'm pretty sure that when we get there, those aren't going to be exactly what they're projected at right now. So I do have, if you're going to put it here, I want staff to figure out a way how we can use this money when we get to we get the budget process that we're not going to squirrel it away and not give it back to the ratepayers. Because it is their money that we're, that we're using here. So that's just, I'm not sure if there's another way. I'd like staff to figure that out. We figured that out in Perth East, how we could use some of our reserves and not have the impact on the next year's budget.
Cory?
Um, correct. This will then update or essentially the mitigation strategy that was presented at council during the 2021 budget. Then we have updated numbers within that levy stabilization reserve. Therefore, potentially updating the amount that we would look to mitigate the impacts to OMPF reductions as identified, we still have a million dollars to you lose annually through the OMPF. But using a opening balance of 1.5 million now will update that mitigation strategy and essentially potentially utilize more money from this levy stabilization reserve in the 2022 budget. So yes, question to Counselor Agus is that the information will come back to council during the 2022 budget process on how to utilize that levy stabilization reserve.
Okay, other comments or questions? I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the 2020 year end reserve transfers report for information. And the Perth County Council approves effective December 31st, 2020, a fall in reserve transfers. $579,198 transferred to levy stabilization reserve. $130,675 transferred to the winter maintenance reserve. And a $350,000 transfer to the fleet capital reserve. Do I have a mover and a second? Move by Counselor Willhite, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor? That's carried. Thanks Cory. And first, anything else?
That is all.
Perfect. So next, we're going to move on to Public Works and that is the courthouse elevator project report. So is that, I'm assuming John, not Bill? Morning, John.
Morning, Warden. Naterson. Good morning, council. This report summarizes the results of the contractor pre qualification for the courthouse elevator project. As council is well aware, we have been working with any engineering on the structural investigation, design and tender documents for the courthouse elevators. Budget for this project was set at $1.5 million with approximately $75,000 spent. We undertook a detailed cost estimate, so which indicated construction costs would be expected to be approximately 1.15 million. However, that cost estimate was unable to determine cost implications due to the pandemic. And it noted that the current construction market is very active and that we could expect some variation in bids due to the lack of contractors in escalating material costs. So a request to pre qualified contractors closed on May 25th. And we, we only received two submissions. One was from Elgin Contracting and Restoration based out of St. Thomas and the other from Decon Construction based out of Waterloo. The staff did review documentation and references with any engineering and determined that both contractors were suitable and could successfully complete the project. Discussions also centered around options and the best path forward. And for that, we reached out for some legal and procurement advice from our county's lawyer. Staff are recommending to move forward to a tender phase with Elgin Contracting and Restoration Limited and with Decon Construction Limited. If council approves the recommendation and proceeds to tender, we would anticipate those results being reported to council at the August 5th council meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for John? Counselor Willhite.
I would assume, John, and you can tell me if I'm right or wrong, that both these firms have done a kind of a reconstruction on older buildings like our hundred year old courthouse are over. And I think it's important that they have are able to maintain integrity and everything of the courthouse while they're doing this construction.
Through you, Warden Naterson. Correct. That was one of the things that we outlined in the pre qualification. And both contractors do have some experience with the with older buildings and restoration activities. Both do have some experience with, with elevator work. So that was another thing we were looking for. So we're, we're fairly satisfied that they do have the qualifications to do this type of project.
Other questions or comments for John? Not seen any hands moving around. I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the courthouse elevator project slash contractor pre qualification report for information. And that Perth County Council directs staff to tender the courthouse elevator project with the contractors identified through the pre qualified requalification process. Moved by Counselor Willhite. Do I have a second or Counselor Duncan? Last chance for questions or comments. My only comment is we'll get this out to tender. We don't like the results coming back. That doesn't necessarily commit, right? Okay. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to move and second it. Those in favor of that motion? And that's carried unanimously. And I'd ask Counselor Wright, but he's probably not going to respond. Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on. Council reports. Not seeing anything. Bylaws, we just have a confirmatory bylaw. Notice of motions. Not seeing any other business. Anybody have anything other, under other business? Not seeing any, any announcements. Counselor Casenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. As most of you know, Atwood has a long history of excessive, excessively good Canada Day celebrations. Of course, the COVID pandemic has changed some of the trajectory of that and what we can and can't do. But we do intend again to bring to our county and our neighbors, Atwood Canada Day 2021, mostly a virtual event, but some activities, certainly a pork chop supper. And I draw to the attention of my fellow colleagues and staff, the county and others, opportunities to participate both online and in the events, including the takeout supper planned for July 1st.
Okay. Anyone else with any announcements? Not seeing any hands moving. Close session, we don't have one. There's no reporting out. Closed session, we don't have one, there's no reporting out. We have confirmatory bylaw number three eight two six two oh two one being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation of the county of Perth at its regular meeting held June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one is read a first, second, and third time, and finally passed June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. Moved by Counselor Kellam, seconded by Counselor Willhout. Those in favor? And that would be carried. And my last one here. The county, the council meeting be adjourned at approximately eleven eleven. Moved by Counselor Hurley, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? And that would be unanimous as well. Thank you very much, folks.